Welcome to the January 20, 2022 Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees meeting. I'm Chairman Greg Musil. Help me start our meeting by honoring our country with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under our own, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Again, welcome to the meeting, particularly welcome our three new trustees, who I think officially became trustees on January 10th following the November election, as well as our returning trustee, trustee Lee Cross, who was re-elected in November as well. We're going to start a new tradition here today, which is to actually formally swear in our new trustees. So if the four trustees that are assuming office now would line up over here where Mark and Dawn are, I will administer the oath from here, and then I will give each of you an opportunity to identify any family members that are here, or make any opening comments. Move down toward the end. I'm trying to get the best angle for the television camera, I think, as possible. Okay, you guys ready? Please raise your right hand. I state your name.
I am Lee Cross.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas
The Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge
Faithfully discharge.
The duties of Johnson County Community College trustee.
The duties of Johnson County Community College trustee.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Okay, it's exciting to have three new trustees, and exciting to have Lee back. I don't know what order would be appropriate. Lee, I'm going to save you to the end, if that's okay, and let the newly sworn-in trustees, if they have any comments, and we will go alphabetically, starting with Mark Hamill. Mark, you want to introduce your family, and make any comments?
Well, my family stepped out. They were kind of young. My wife Anna was here, and my three kids, Amala, Esha, and Marcus, they just left actually a second ago.
Okay. All right, I've got to do my alphabetizing. Trustee Coeston, Joy Coeston.
Hi, I'm Joy Coeston. I'm very happy to be here, a former teacher who used to teach here at the college, and I am just very thrilled to be on this board. I'd like to recognize my husband Stuart, who's with me tonight, and I have a few friends watching, so I want to shout out to them. So, thank you.
And last but not least, trustee Dawn Ratan. Dawn?
Hi, I'm Dawn Ratan. I'm very excited to start this role. In the audience are my niece and nephew, Tuan and Kai, my sister Charmaine, my aunt Poonam, my great niece
Yay!
And my husband Manu. My two sons were here earlier, but there's basketball game calls, Rishi and Nikki, and thank you again, as well, to all of my friends and family for watching online.
Okay, trustee Cross?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's my great honor to return. I'd like to thank my wife, first and foremost, who supported me for a number of years, and our two children, but also to the other members of this board and the administration, our faculty, for all that they've done to support me and to help me grow in the position. So, thank you.
The next item on the agenda is roll call, and I will say that all seven trustees are present in the room, so we do have a quorum. That leads us to the first substantive item on the agenda, which is the election of officers. As the members of the board know, and kind of explain to the public, we changed our policies in November such that the new Board of Trustees will participate in the election of officers and the appointment of liaisons to various groups that we send a trustee to, such as the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees, the Johnson County Community College Foundation, the Johnson County Education Research Triangle, and I'm probably missing some, but... So, we will do that. When we changed the policy in November, we didn't fully realize all of the impacts that would have and what gaps might be present, such as changing chairs in the middle of a meeting, and some other, and whether we could have a committee of the whole meeting in January with the old board members, and then have a board meeting with the new board members. Those are things that I think the new chair will undertake as we look at a review of the policies that apply to the Board of Trustees. So, we're learning as we go along here, and in that vein, I have spoken with the two individuals nominated for chair by the nominating committee, just to confirm the notion that if they are comfortable with it, which they are, rather than switch horses in the middle of the stream, I would entertain a motion... But let me give you the choices. The choices for switching chair are: the minute the new chair is elected, he or she takes over; the minute the full elections are completed through all the liaisons, the new chair takes over; or the new chair and officers can assume their roles at the February meeting. And what the three of us talked about was having the new officers assume their role at the February meeting. So, if there's a motion to that effect, or if there are questions or comments before a motion, we should have them now. This is one of the gaps that we didn't really think through completely. Although I guess the policy does directly say the new chair will preside upon election, that puts a new chair in a difficult position, so that's part of the reason I think we need a motion to indicate that the officers will assume their roles beginning February 1.
Mr. Chair.
Trustee Cross?
I would move that you continue as chair for the duration of the meeting.
I'll second.
Second.
Moved by trustee Cross and seconded by trustee Ingram. Any discussion or questions? I know for the newbies, this is... Yeah, trustee Ingram.
Well, I think my only comment at this point would be, as a reminder to all of us, and to share with our new folks, that we did indicate that we would be reviewing some of those policies as we begin after the first of the year. So, I don't see this as a huge piece, and hope you would agree with that, but our plan and our intent was, as we were looking at your orientation, for example, that we would look at some of those policies after the first of the year and after you all were installed. So, we want to include you. Thank you.
Other discussion?
If I may.
Trustee Cross?
Part of my motivation for this, in my now ninth year, I think we've always done it that way, right? And your leadership the past two years has been good, great even, I think I wrote in an email to you, and I appreciate your leadership on this. I trust you to guide us through this meeting, and I can't be any more bear with you. So, thank you for your service, and thank you for continuing here tonight.
Thank you. And just so everybody's aware, the past process was that at the last meeting of the outgoing board, they would elect officers to include the new trustees, and appoint liaisons with consultation with the new trustees, but without them voting on it. What we changed was, and that meant, at the last meeting of the outgoing board, we'd elect officers for the incoming board, and they would be ready to go one month later. By putting off elections until the new board's in place, we don't have that luxury, and so I think we'll address that in our policy review sometime as a board in the future. But this is kind of a stopgap, and it's certainly not an anticipated takeover by me of this very short meeting, I hope.
That's not a coup?
It's not a coup.
I could seek clarification, because I think maybe I heard two different things. Does the... Do officers take effect February 1, or do they take effect following the conclusion of the meeting?
As I heard the motion, it was that the chair would preside over the rest of this meeting, but I assume in that that officers become... Take over their roles immediately, other than the chair presiding for this meeting.
Yeah, that was bad drafting. That was my intention, I just...
Okay, yep. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, if we delayed February 1st, we might miss some liaison meetings, so that's... Thank you for that clarification, Dr. Ban. All right, any further discussion? If not, all in favor of allowing the chair to continue to chair till the end of this meeting, and have all officers elected today assume their positions immediately? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? That motion carries. The second motion that is based on a recommendation of the nominating committee, which was trustee Smith Everett and trustee Cook, was that, and I assume this was to be, if there are contested races, that we do it by ballot. So, you would have a written ballot wherein you would vote for the candidate of your choice. I will make sure everybody knows that those ballots are public record, and that your vote will be read, so everybody will know who you voted for under the Kansas Open Meetings Act. That is a requirement, but it allows people to contemplate and write as they see fit, pass them in, and unless somebody objects to this, I will just read them out as soon as we get done to facilitate the vote. To do that, it's been recommended by our legal counsel that we have a motion, and my request for a motion would be that only contested officer positions or liaison positions be done by ballot. If it's uncontested, I don't see any reason to go through that process. Do I hear such a motion or alternative?
So, moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Smith Everett and seconded by trustee Ingram.
Just a point of contention, Chairman. We are... We asked our board clerk to do the reading, just so that it was neutral, so after the votes are cast, we'll ask Ms. Schlitt to read that out loud. Is that still acceptable?
Terry and I are prepared, if there are ballots... Written ballots cast, that she and I will do the tabulation.
Okay, that way just...
So, that part of the motion... Ignore that part of the motion, right?
Yes.
You made the motion, that wasn't included in your motion.
You didn't actually say that in that motion, so who reads it is not ordered. I think we're okay.
Okay. Any other questions or clarifications? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Opposed, no? That motion also carries 7-0. All right, with that, we do have in your packet, and it was posted with the agenda today, a report of the... A report and recommendation of the nominating committee, which was trustee Smith Everett and trustee Jerry Cook. Trustee Smith Everett, do you want to present that?
Yes, please. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your board packet, found on page one, you will see the slate of officers, committees, and liaisons. Former trustee, Dr. Cook and I consulted with our new board members and current board members to make sure that these positions were feasible for people that we are nominating for, and got robust agreement on all of these. Just as you said a few minutes ago, the way that we decided to proceed for chair is that we will have two... We are recommending two people, trustee Cross and trustee Ingram, and that that can be cast by paper ballot, and then that the vice chairperson would then take... The role would be taken by the person with the lesser votes from the chair election. Then we are recommending treasurer would be myself. Secretary, what we decided, because we have the new members, there was one slot for an officer role, was that we would take the person that received the highest votes at the last election, and so that would be Mark Hamill as the secretary. I just wanted you to know that understanding of why we recommended that for one of the officer roles. Then proceeding to committee, audit and collegial steering are always done by our chair and vice chair. College Counsel, trustee Musil. Our liaison positions, we have two members for the foundation, that would be trustee Ratan and myself. For KACC, we are recommending trustee Ingram and trustee Coeston. And then for J-Cert, we are recommending trustee Musil. With that, it is the recommendation of the nominating committee that the Board of Trustees approve the 2022 slate of officers, committees, and liaison assignments as presented in your packet, and I will make that motion.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the recommendation of the nominating committee, that the Board of Trustees approve the slate as presented by the nominating committee. Another gap in our process is, in the past, the nominating committee's recommendation has been adopted without competing candidates for specific offices.
Right.
If we adopt the motion made by trustee Smith Everett and seconded by trustee Cross, it would be adoption of this recommendation as made?
Correct.
Is that your intention?
Yes.
Because the other alternative is that we call out and we vote on each individual office separately. So, discussion on the motion. Trustee Ratan?
I would like to amend the options for vice chair and add trustee Smith Everett for vice chair.
There are two ways to handle that. One is to vote down the motion, the other would be to move to amend the motion to add a nomination of trustee Smith Everett as vice chair. That's the way I see the parliamentary process for doing that. Do you want to move to make that amendment?
Yes.
I had indicated you were going to go down one by one, but with the way the motion is made, it's a slate, so... So, trustee Ratan has moved to amend the motion so that the slate would be adopted as presented, with the exception that we would have a contested election for vice chair between trustee Smith Everett and the lower receiving vote total of the two chair candidates. Is there a second?
A second, I'm sorry.
So, moved by trustee Ratan and seconded by trustee Coeston. Okay, so we're voting on the amendment, which would be to change the recommendation of the nominating committee, and to, in the vice chairperson position, add the name of trustee Laura Smith Everett. I will just note that if that passes, we have a potential issue for treasurer, because trustee Smith Everett is listed as the nominee for treasurer. I don't think our policies prohibit anybody from holding two positions. I think in the 52 years of the college, nobody has held two positions. So, I think if this amendment passes, then we will need to consider after anything else here that we may have to fill the treasurer position.
Mr. Chairman, would it be easier if I withdraw my recommendation and offer a new one that is more in line with one officer election at a time? Can I do that once it's been?
You are the motion maker, you may withdraw your motion.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and withdraw my motion.
Okay. All right, so we have no motion on the table then. The underlying motion was withdrawn, so the motion to amend falls as well. So, now we have a recommendation without a motion. So, is there any motion, either to adopt the recommendation as made, or to proceed in some other fashion?
I can make that recommendation.
Okay.
So, I am going to make the motion to recommend that we first vote for chairperson, as listed on the packet on page one, which would be for Lee Cross, Nancy Ingram, to be conducted by paper ballot.
Second. It's been moved by trustee Smith Everett and seconded by trustee Cross to proceed with the election of the chair position only, with the two candidates being Lee Cross and Nancy Ingram. It is my belief that if we are going to open it up to office by office, we should also offer other nominations from the floor, if anybody has any. The people that are listed on the nominating committee report, I would assume are nominated. I'm going to consider them nominated, but that doesn't mean somebody else can't be nominated that's not listed. So, are there any other nominations for chair, other than trustee Cross and trustee Ingram? Trustee Ingram?
May I just make a comment? And I appreciate all the movement tonight and everything that is occurring, certainly. But I did want to mention that trustee Cross and I have spoken, and I appreciate his strong desire to be the chairman of this board. And as such, I have indicated to him that I would be comfortable in serving as his vice chair, and he has agreed that he would be interested in that support. So, I just want to say that I appreciate the support that he has indicated for vice chair, but that my support would be for him.
So, you'll withdraw your name as a potential chair?
No, I don't think I want to do that.
Okay.
But I'm just suggesting that...
I'm sorry.
No, but I understand... I'm just saying that my vote will be for him.
Okay, I got you. All right, if there are no other nominations for chair, then we will pass out the ballots, write your name on the ballot, and write either Cross or Ingram, depending upon whom you would support to be chair of this board, beginning at 6:01 tonight when we move to adjourn. That's my... That's a goal.
6:01.
Never hurts to hope.
Don't set expectations.
And now we back around to collect them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I knew we'd get you on camera, Terry. I was going to say we need some music, or Jeopardy or something, maybe?
Do, 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 do. Some elevator music?
Waiting for Ohio to come in.
Nevada was the... There were several. What are you guys doing?
Is Terry going to read the results? Or I think that's what... Follow the nominating committee's recommendation. Terry Shalish, thank you for taking on this role.
You're welcome. So, as we've tabulated the ballots, for Lee Cross as chair, votes cast were by trustee Ingram, trustee Ratan, trustee Coeston, trustee Smith Everett, and trustee Cross. For Nancy Ingram, votes cast were by trustee Musil and trustee Hamill.
Congratulations, trustee Cross. 6:01 PM. That's be our new chair. The next item then would be the election of... Well, we don't have any motion on the floor.
I was going to say, Mr. Chairman, can I make a motion for the next one?
Trustee Smith Everett.
Okay, so I make a motion to elect for vice chair to be the candidate... Trustee Ingram for the vice chair position. Is that a good enough motion?
Yep. Second. Trustee Ingram has been moved and seconded as the nominee for vice chair, and nominations do not need a second, so just if anybody has any, but trustee Smith Everett moved and trustee Cross seconded. Are there any other nominations for vice chair?
Chair Musil, I would like to nominate Laura Smith Everett, trustee Smith Everett for vice chair.
Any other nominations for vice chair? If not, we can have discussion on each of these, if anybody would like to have discussion on them. So, I don't want to preclude any discussion on anybody. So, is there any discussion on either of the candidates? Trustee Ratan?
I believe that both candidates are very capable and would do well in the role. My reasoning for nominating is that trustee Ingram is on the KACC, and I would just love some continuity there in our role as JCC on that board, and your leadership there as well.
I appreciate that, and I think it's a tribute to trustee Ingram that she's been president of the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees going into her third year.
It's great leadership.
And I've watched that... I haven't gone to any meetings, but I've watched them on Zoom and participated, and really appreciate the leadership she's done there. I'm going to support trustee Ingram, because I don't think those roles overlap enough that it would be any kind of burden to do that. I also want to... We haven't changed our policies yet. We have a nominating committee. I picked the most senior trustee, and at the time, the most junior trustee, and they made a recommendation for chair and vice chair, and I think for that nominating committee to have credibility and meaning, that we should follow it. So, I will be voting for trustee Ingram. Any other comments? If not, we'll pass out the ballot, write your name, and vote right in there, Ingram or Smith Everett. And you must mail Smith Everett a write. Put your name tag down. I think I've got it after two years.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, no, that's...
For vice chair, votes cast for Nancy Ingram were by trustee Cross, trustee Ingram, trustee Hamill, and trustee Musil. Votes cast for trustee Smith Everett were by trustee Smith Everett, trustee Coeston, and trustee Ratan.
Congratulations, trustee Ingram, vice chair. We have a nomination from the committee of Laura Smith Everett for treasurer?
Just to be clear, the committee was not just me. There was trustee Cross.
Right, no.
I just wouldn't... I couldn't get him to come one more time for one more meeting. I promise he was part of this committee.
Trustee Smith Everett.
Oh, I'm sorry, trustee Cook. Did I say Cross?
Pointed out that trustee Cook was the committee, and when she asked him... Pointed out that Trustee Cook was the committee, and when she asked him if he was coming to the meeting, it was the loudest and longest laugh she ever heard at a hearing.
It is true. It is true.
And I asked her the same thing, and I agree with her on different occasions. So are there any other nominations for Treasurer beyond Trustee Smith Everett? If not, I would accept a motion to appoint and elect Trustee Smith Everett as our Treasurer.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Ingram, seconded by Trustee Cross. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? That passes unanimously, seven zero. Congratulations, Laura. A lot of money we're gonna have to keep an eye on. You'll do fine. All right, Secretary, nominating committee nominated Mark Hamel. You heard their rationale earlier. Are there any other nominations for Secretary other than Trustee Hamel? If not, I would accept a motion to elect Mark Hamel as our Secretary.
So move.
Moved by Trustee Ratan.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Cross. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, no? That passes seven zero. Congratulations, Mark.
And then, Mr. Chairman, I was going to recommend the remainder of the slate of committees and liaison members to be, to be voted on as one slate from Audit, Collegial Steering, College Council Foundation, KACCt, and J-Cert.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Seconded by Trustee Smith Everett and seconded by Trustee Cross to, to adopt the Committee, Nominating Committee recommendation for Committees and Liaisons, Trustee Cross.
Trustee Ingram will continue as President of KACCt, is that right?
As far as I know, yes. I think Trustee Musil is right. There's, you know, we meet quarterly. We are, we are active, I will say that, but I look forward to Trustee Coesten in, in a support role during those meetings particularly. I think that will be really helpful.
No, I think it's good, I think it's good you've been there. I just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
That would happen.
For the, for the public and for those in the room who are, who are new as family members, the Audit Committee is really now subsumed within our Committee as a whole, but the Audit Committee members who have, who are by policy the Chairman and the Vice Chair, excuse me, Chair and Vice Chair of the Board, have other duties. For instance, in an ethics report line against a member of the trustees, the report goes directly to the Chair and Vice Chair for review and action, and there are some other things like that. So that's why we need to appoint somebody to those committees, even though the Audit, the Audit Committee responsibilities will also report to the full Board at the Committee as a whole. So any further discussion about those? If not, is there, all those in favor of accepting the Nominating Committee's recommendation for Committee and Liaison assignments, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Or yes. All those opposed, no? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all, and look forward to everybody performing their roles as we work together as a Board and get to know each other better as a Board. Awards and recognition, the first thing we do, Dr. Brown, a student spotlight, Rick Nunez.
All right, Rick Nunez, if you come to the podium.
Hello, hello, everybody.
Have a great opportunity to spend time with him, and so please tell us your story.
Yeah, so before I get started with my story, I want to say congratulations to the new Board members, Dawn, Mark, Joy. I hope it's okay if I use your first names. I will shout you, shout out Mark first. You won me a game of Jeopardy recently. I'm guessing who you were, so you got me some free stuff. Thank you so much for that. Dawn, I feel, I feel like I'm meeting a local celebrity. I see you everywhere. Well, I've saw you everywhere for a good while, so hello, 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 and just a pleasure to meet everybody. But yeah, my name is Rick Nunez. I'm a second-year student here at JCCC. Recently made the switch from the business program over to the graphic design program. And besides that, I am a father, a wife, a wife, not a wife, I'm a, I'm a husband and a father. And this is not my first stint in college. This is my second time coming around to college, so I guess I am a non-traditional student. But I'm proud to say that, I will say, for the longest time, I thought, I thought very negatively in my first experience in college, but thinking back on it now, I find it to be a very positive experience. It taught me that after, just because you try once, it doesn't work out, you can come back and try again, and it could be a different story this time around. And it has been a different story. I hate to make myself big here, but I was on the honor roll last semester, two semesters ago, which is very uncommon of me if I was talking to my 20-year-old self on the first time in college. So I'm very prideful, and I, and I think the biggest change was the school, to be honest, and the professors I surrounded myself with, and the people I associated with on top of that. When I walked in here, I saw these little mottos along the wall, and the one that really stood out to me was student-centered, which I 100% totally back on that, based on my history. I didn't have the biggest, the greatest perception on school and the faculty that worked there, worked here. But after being here, like I said, for a few years now, I have had the honor of being a student advisor or sit-in on the Business Board as well, and I've met nothing but great people there. And I've actually got to see how some curriculum gets rolled out and how it gets curated. And when I, and when I see that student-centered, I, again, 100% back. It's, the question is always asked, how is this gonna benefit the students? And I find that super amazing. So yeah, I have, I have a newfound faith in the system, education system, or at least here at JCCC, and so far, you guys haven't let me down, and it's been nothing but a joyous ride. And you guys have me for two more years, so give me a call. If you need anything, I'll be around. But yeah, that's, that's pretty much me in a nutshell. I'd love questions, if anybody has questions.
We always have questions. Do any trustees have any questions? Trustee Smith Everett? That's, it's a call, no look, that's a no look recognition.
I always have questions. Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Welcome. Thank you so much for suffering through our very boring Board elections, but we appreciate you being here. Tell us a little bit about where you were before this, either high school, or just regionally, or why you say that you really made that transition from not your typical, not the way you were in your young twenties to now.
Yeah, I think I grew up a lot. You know, part of being a dad is you learn a lot from your kids somehow, some way. I don't know how that works, or they can't explain it, how I learned from my son, but I have, and somehow it shaped me to be more of a responsible adult. I think it has to do with me wanting more from my son, or me, you know, let's see here, yeah, me wanting more for him, and me wanting him not to make the same mistakes that I made growing up. So I think that's changed me immensely, to be honest with you. But in addition to that, I think after spending 10 years in the workforce and climbing the, the corporate ladder to a position I, I described as extremely successful for what I thought I was gonna be, I quickly learned that a little hard work goes a really long way. So then I was like, well, what if I do a lot of hard work? Where can I end up then? So that's my goal now. I'm putting in a lot of work to hopefully retire in 10 years. So that is, that is my goal. Yeah.
Sounds great.
Trustee Coesten.
Yes, thank you for being here tonight and for all your hard work. Tell me, how did you find, how did you come to find out about JCCC? And what, like, what prompted you to walk in the door and enroll?
Okay, well, I found JCCC through adulting, as I say. When you're an adult, you go for the most, you shop around, you learn to be savvy with your money and be, and penny pinch it quite a bit. So besides the value of JCC, I mean, the value was what attracted me to JCCC here, but what really got me in the door was a lot of phone calls, a lot of close relatives about, during the pandemic, that's all we had, phone calls. I think a lot of us went through that. So called a lot of close relatives and kind of asked them, you know, I'm going through a career change, what do you think the best move is? And nine out of 10 said, go back to school, it's, it's the best choice you could make. But yeah, so a combination of value, and then people just pushing me to go back to school, and you guys being in my backyard, I only live a couple, couple minutes away too, too, so that really helps.
Trustee Ratan.
I love your perseverance. I always say try, try, and try again, and always have a Plan B, so I love that your articulation of that, and I hope that there are some people in your life that you can turn around and give back to and advise that. My question is, you said you are in graphic design. What do you love about graphic design? What led you to that?
So I've always loved drawing, to be honest, but one day I told, I told Andy this, one day I was sitting at the dinner table with my son and my wife. My wife is a nurse, and my son is ranting on about how everybody has a thing in life. Everybody has their thing. His friend Colin, his thing is to not be so fond of sit-down learning time. Himself, my son, he's very, his thing is Fortnite. My wife's thing is caring for people, because she's a nurse, and then I asked him, well, what's my thing, you know? He said, well, you love to draw, Dad. Look, look at all the napkins, you're drawing all over the place, you're doodling all the time. And I said, well, that's, that's 100% true. I do love to doodle. You know, I call it not paying attention, but. You're calling it doodling, you're calling it everything else under the sun, so yeah, we'll roll with that. And that's honestly what took me into graphic design, my, my son.
That's cool. That's great. Trustee Cross.
Yes, how old is your son?
He's 10.
Is he your only?
He's my only, yes.
My wife's a graphic designer, and I remember when President Clinton came to Wichita in 1997, I remember watching him on the dais, and he, I thought he was taking notes. And that's how I actually didn't like him. I thought he was so smart, he's sitting there taking notes, and then come to find out later, he was doodling. And he would doodle with his other hand, he was left-handed, so he doodled with his right hand to feel different parts of his brain work.
That's very interesting.
One last question, if I may. Where did you get that jacket?
This? Oh, so besides being a student here, I also work as part of the Student Life Department. So I actually make the marketing material for a lot of the events you guys see here. So yeah, this is where I got the vest, and my, my boss, Cassie Jordan, gave it to me.
Can we buy those?
And we get one that says trustee, I like that a lot.
Well, I'm sure we can find one, I'm sure we can work it out, I'm sure we can find some space in the budget for that.
Medium.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you, Rick. We, we have a great student in Dr. Brown's tradition to bring somebody. You are another one that inspires all of us, and I, I would just like to say, when you go home, would you please thank your wife for her services as a nurse?
Yes, I will. She will.
Always, but for the last two years and for what's to come, thank her for us.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you guys for having me. I do appreciate it, guys.
Another winner, Dr. Brown. Now, the next award in recognition is the 2021 UCS, what does the U stand for? I just have a blank.
United.
United Community Service Award that was presented to the college.
And Alisa Waldman will be joining us with others, and so if we can bring her up on the screen.
Good evening. Can you all see and hear me?
We can hear you, but we cannot see you.
We don't see you yet.
I can hear you.
Wow, now I see myself. Okay, good to go?
Yeah, good to go.
All right, terrific. Well, thank you for your time this evening. My name is Alisa Waldman, and I have the pleasure of serving as the Vice President of Workforce Development and Continuing Education at the college. And congratulations to our new trustees, welcome, and thank, thank you all for your service to our college. It's my pleasure tonight to share an impactful program with you. This program is the College of Trades. The College of Trades provides opportunities for individuals to achieve success through the development of occupational skills for in-demand industries that offer employment at a livable wage. The College of Trades partnership is comprised of three partners being recognized this evening. N-Circle, Johnson County Department of Corrections, and Johnson County Community College. N-Circle is an amazing organization dedicated to connecting people to community opportunities to end the cycle of incarceration and stabilize families and futures. Johnson County Department of Corrections supports and provides for clients through services at the Adult Residential Center in New Century, Kansas. It is the residents of these programs at the Adult Residential Center who are eligible to be students in the College of Trades. And Johnson County Community College Continuing Education partners with N-Circle and the Department of Corrections to provide courses to the College of Trades students. Individuals currently incarcerated at the Adult Residential Center have an opportunity to apply to be a part of the College of Trades program. When they are accepted into the program, individuals then complete a 12-week Essential Skills class taught by N-Circle, as well as a path of courses for welding, construction, ServSafe certification, customer service, or technology. And those are offered through the college's continuing education. In the last two and a half years in which JCCC has been working with N-Circle and the Department of Corrections, there have been over 160 enrollments in these programs. The recidivism rate is 8% for those who complete this program compared to 34% who do not participate in such a program. The College of Trades is meaningfully impacting the lives of these Johnson County residents. In December 2021, just last month, the College of Trades partnership received the 2021 United Community Service Excellence in Community Service Award. The UCS Excellence and Excellence in Community Service Award recognizes an organizational partnership that has significantly improved the lives of Johnson County residents. Characteristics of honorees include the following. Demonstrates positive outcomes. Uses or collaboration with human service delivery strategies have been demonstrated to be effective. Accessible and inclusive. Works with other entities in partnership or collaboratively. And adheres to high ethical and accountability standards. Almost every continuing education employee at JCCC has touched this program, whether it be our program coordinators, our program directors, our registration team, and our college's financial aid office has also been extremely helpful. Additionally, the JCCC Foundation has been critical in supporting this program and its growth through the Better Tomorrow Funds. So the representatives joining us tonight are from the three partner organizations that were recognized by UCS. We have Angela Paz, Deputy Director from the Department of Corrections, Adult Residential Center, Lee Jost, the Executive Director of N-Circle, and our own Debbie Rulo, the Executive Director of Workforce Development and Continuing Education at JCCC. So we are delighted to share the program with you and to invite the Board to recognize the contributions of this meaningful partnership. If there are any questions, I'm sure our partners would be happy to entertain them, but we are just thrilled to be able to share this with you. Thank you.
Specific questions? Trustee Cross?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. If I may, 8% is outstanding, right? What exactly does that mean, 8% recidivism?
If I may ask Angela Paz, I don't know, Angela, if you can address that probably more clearly than W.
Absolutely. In the Department of Correction world, we do a lot of our, our outcomes based upon our recidivism rate. And basically what that is, is are our clients picking up additional charges, or are they staying out of the legal system? So that's what recidivism is, and that's what we're trying to do, is keep them out of the criminal justice system. And employment and education has definitely been one of those roads that has made such an important impact with these clients and actually helps keep that recidivism rate so low.
And if I may, Mr. Chair, thank you for that answer, Angela. I worked in the Jackson County Prosecutor's Office over in Missouri, and I practiced law for 15, 16 years now. And that means that those people that, that don't repeat a offense, now they can pay child support, they can pay taxes and be productive members of society, and then we don't have to pay for them to be in jail, right?
That's exactly what that means.
All right, that's great. Thank you.
They are back out in the community, and they're being productive citizens.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? If not, thank you. We love hearing those success stories and appreciate the staff at the college who have helped gain that recognition for the college. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the Open Forum. The Open Forum is a period in each regularly scheduled Board meeting in which members of the public can register to make comments regarding college business, college activities. There is a five minutes, limit of five minutes per speaker, unless there are a large number of speakers, in which case the Chair can limit that to three minutes during, during any. During any comments, we expect the speakers to be respectful and civil and in person to remain at the podium. In order to register by Zoom, so you can participate virtually, you need to register by 5:00 p.m. on the Wednesday before the board meeting. You can also register in person up until 4:45 p.m. before our 5:00 meeting outside the boardroom. Today, we have no registered speakers in the Open Forum. So, we'll move into board reports. We have another great event with Student Senate President Shelby Winter. Welcome, Shelby, a new semester.
Hello. Good to be back from break. Student Senate is beginning to prepare for this upcoming spring 2022 semester. We're thrilled to have another semester in person to engage and impact students' lives. Here are some specific updates. Student Senate has changed its general assembly date and time to Fridays from 12:00 p.m. to 1:00 p.m. The location is being finalized, but we're anticipating having it held in MTC 107. Student Senate will be having our semestral retreat on Friday, January 28th, from 2:30 to 5:30 p.m. And currently, we're prioritizing recruitment, and we're looking forward to participating in the CSI Clubs and Orgs Retreat.
Okay, well, I know you'll have a busy semester. I suspect that January is a little slower than November and December when you're doing all kinds of things with JCC cares and otherwise. But questions for Shelby?
Nice hat.
Thank you.
That looks cool. Thank you, Shelby. We'll look forward to hearing from you next month.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate your being here.
Thank you, Shelby.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is our college lobbyist, Dick Carter. Mr. Carter, are you there virtually?
I am here, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations to our new trustee members, Trustees Ratan, Costin, and Hamel. Welcome to the board, and I hope to continue the tradition of not boring you with my legislative update and my pledge to make sure that we're done by 6:01 p.m.
Is that a tradition, really, Dick?
Yes, Jerry, it is.
The legislature returned last week, and although this is the second year of a carryover cycle, in many ways, it's been similar to a brand-new legislative cycle. Last year started off very strange. Everything was sort of a surgical-strike nature approach to the legislative process, and there were a lot of COVID protocols in place. This year, the session has started about as normal as I've seen it or recall from history. And so, last year, we had little to no hospitality, little to no meetings or in-person interaction. So, we're still meeting some of the newly elected, although they've been in place for a year, legislators for the first time in many cases. So, that's essentially what happened last week. The legislature returned on the 10th of January, and it's sort of back-to-school week, finding the bathroom, making sure you know where your office is, those types of things. On day two of the 2022 session, Governor Kelly delivered her State of the State address, and some of those highlights included eliminating the state sales tax on food purchases, freezing college tuition rates at the state university level, increased funding for law enforcement and corrections, fully funding K-12 schools, and a 5% raise for state employees. I talk a lot about the consensus revenue estimating process, and in November, that group met, and post-consensus revenue estimates indicate that the continued robust revenues to the state will produce a nearly $3 billion surplus by the end of fiscal year 2022. That's June 30th of this year. That number shapes the narrative for the governor's budget recommendations, which we'll talk about in a minute, but also provides the fodder for changes to tax policy. We know that we'll see proposals related to food sales tax, individual income tax rate reductions, we'll see some property tax policy suggestions, as well as the governor's suggestion to return $250 to state income tax filers. Just the two items, the food sales tax and returning the $250 windfall, has a price tag of about $900 million. So, you know, that's an easy way to chip away at $3 billion, and we'll see a lot of that type of activity throughout the legislative session this year. Many of the proposals that I just mentioned have yet to be introduced, and the conversations and hearings have not started in earnest. We're just sort of have a, we're in that information cycle, period of the beginning of the legislature. Funding for higher education fills the gaps that were left short in the past, but for state universities, the charge from the governor would be to freeze tuition rates. The House has separate committees dedicated to higher education budgeting process, and this year, we've seen some signals that the Ways and Means Chairman will send the higher education budget through the Senate Education Committee. Typically, that group has subcommittees that meet and vet the budget process. It sounds like this year, it's going to go through the Senate Education Committee. That's interesting in and of itself because some of those folks aren't on the Ways and Means Committee. Redistricting, that's going to be the big driver this year of everything that happens. Typically, in a regular year, the legislature has one job, to pass a constitutionally balanced budget. This year, they have two, to pass the budget and to pass new maps. We're at that point for the every 10-year cycle, and probably the biggest piece of the news this week was the introduction of several congressional maps, one in particular that places Riley and Douglas Counties in the first district. That means KU and K-State would be in the first district. There's some other maps that carve out portions of Wyandotte County and move boundaries around in the third district, and certainly, that will be one to watch. That will be a target for lots of different map drawers. But we're far from done. The first set of maps certainly drew the attention of the media and those that watched this process very closely. But having been through this process for a few decades, I can say fairly confidently that the court would very likely not approve the congressional maps that are the starting point of the discussion. One of the big things that we worked on and passed last year was the Kansas Promise Act Scholarship. The trailer bill has been introduced and has had hearings this week in the Senate Education Committee. Essentially, the trailer bill means cleanup amendments for the bill that was passed last year. Items that were found to either not work or not work the way they were intended are being recommended for change. Some of those things are like clarifying many of the definitions, such as what is a part-time student as it pertains to the Promise Act Trailer or the Promise Act Scholarship, extending the deadline for the Board of Regents to promulgate the regulations that they're required to develop, clarifying that the Board of Regents would be the enforcement agency for several of the provisions of the bill, the clawback provisions, tracking the students, things like that, and then possible expansion of the field of study, some of the programs that would be eligible for the Promise Scholarship. The committee will continue its discussions on that bill and will likely vote on it next week, and it will move to the Senate floor and make its way over to the House, where it will go through a different committee over there. It will likely go to the Commerce Committee rather than the Education Committee. That's exactly what happened in last year. There will be a hearing next week that we'll be participating in and closely watching. The motorcycle training and truck driver training bill is something that is close to the college. We have a program within the college. In fact, there's very few programs across the state that colleges still oversee or have related to truck driver training or motorcycle driver training, and we will be watching that process very closely. That hearing will be next Thursday on the 27th. Definitely kind of off to a slow start. Like I said, last week was the first week, and people are remembering what the process looks like. We've had several COVID breakouts at the Capitol, so much so that some committees have been postponed or canceled, either for the rest of this week or for the beginning of next week, and I think we'll continue to see some of that play out. Makes it a little bit difficult to get forums. We do have the online ability to continue to hold committee action, but it's going to be interesting if you don't have staff that can be there to support the committee process. Mr. Chairman, that pretty much sums up what the first few weeks of the session looked like, and so maybe I'd stop there, see if folks have any questions or what they want to talk about this evening.
Well, I'm sure somebody will ask you what's going to happen by May, which you probably know. Questions for our lobbyist, Mr. Carter. Trustee Smith Everett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Carter, for your very thorough presentation. January is always one of those months where your presence and your role is really critical for informing us things that affect us here. My question is about the motorcycle and truck driver training hearing. What is the purpose? What is the hearing about?
So, the part of those provisions have been contained in the Kansas State Department of Education, and they're moving over to the Kansas Department of Revenue where the motor vehicle division exists, and that's where the Driver's License Bureau and a lot of that training exists. And so, I think there's a general effort to consolidate some of those components into the Department of Revenue. The concern that would follow would be that that funding that flows through to those schools that do provide those services continue to do so. So, we'll be tracking that very closely to make sure that those funds continue to move in the right direction.
Thank you.
Other questions? If not, thank you, Dick. I know there will be more reports and more to report on as we go forward. We appreciate your work in Topeka on behalf of the college.
Thank you.
The next item is Dr. Jim Leicher, the President of the Faculty Association. Welcome, Jim. Happy New Year.
Thank you. Good evening. Judging by the clock, it's 6:01, so I was going to ruin this for you tonight. Sorry. I'll start by extending a special welcome from the Faculty Association to Trustees Hamel, Costin, and Ratan, and congratulations to Trustee Cross on your election as chair. Speaking to the new folks, by now, you're probably wondering how long it will take before you comprehend JCC and all its complexity. I'm here to tell you that you never will. I'm entering my third decade, and just when I believe I know the physical layout, the programs, the offices, and the people who all make it somehow work, things change, and then suddenly, I'm in catch-up mode. Our college is a complicated engine with lots of layers and moving parts, the totality of which no one person really understands, let alone controls. While it's not our main purpose, the FA tries to inform good decision-making by improving communications between those parts and layers. We do that by representing the group which has the most interaction with students, namely the faculty. Classes began on Tuesday, making this our fifth semester in a row of dealing with the pandemic. I wouldn't compare our recent adjustments to the painful ones I've heard about in K-12, but we are dealing with similar problems. Some of these, by now, are familiar, like trying to enforce mask-wearing or getting clear understanding about FERPA rules regarding student privacy in the context of COVID reporting now being handled by Rapid Trace. Other problems are new, brought on by the staffing and supply chain crises ranging everywhere from the minor inconvenient to the more serious, like, for instance, finding out that the lab or the classroom which was supposed to be converted for hybrid use over the break was not. Anecdotally speaking, we're taking more student questions than usual, like, how do I figure out the class search feature? Is taking this or that class online the right move for me? Or why do I need to come to campus on these days for exams? Last week also was the setting for a two-day due process hearing over the termination of a non-probationary faculty member, something unprecedented in the history of the college. As since to happen at the start of a semester, there's been a spirited discussion on FA listserv concerning the merits of virtual versus in-person instruction. One colleague there expressed the sentiment that, in light of the special danger it presents, teaching face-to-face should be honored and maybe even compensated higher than those teaching remotely. Others voiced a contrary view, that with infection rates climbing, the college should offer fewer in-person classes and move toward more remote learning. That variety of opinion is to be expected because we are not a monolithic bunch. Most of the discussion acknowledged that our various methods of instruction by which departments construct schedules tailored to particular student needs are working pretty well. No magic formula applies to all scenarios, and any blanket generalization about the best way to teach will be wrong somewhere. I did find two listserv comments particularly enlightening. One pointed out, if we're serious about diversity and inclusion, those principles should apply to delivery methods. A silver lining of the last two years, and I think there are some, is that we've been forced to give students more options for balancing employment and education with safety and well-being. Here's the downside to that: having too many options can be scary. Similarly, my other favorite comment noted that while it's here to stay, online teaching requires a special expertise for which most of us are not trained. Managing the shift requires technical support, which I think most of us are very satisfied with. I can't speak highly enough about the Educational Technology Center and Ed Lovett and his crew, but that support needs to continue and to grow. Enrollment's been another concern for us, as I'm sure it is for the board. Some departments, accounting for one, math for another, are reporting unfilled sections for the first time ever. Nationwide, more than a million fewer students are attending colleges and universities than before 2020. While those numbers have been trending downward for a long time, COVID sent that decline into hyperdrive. As for why, one easy assumption is that students aren't coming to us like they used to because they're working. Unemployment is down, wages for unskilled work are going up, high school graduates who a year ago decided to take a break aren't returning. As childcare becomes more of a challenge, the career programs that cater to young parents suffer a drop. Some faculty attribute the decline to problems in banner and new course designations, which I've described from this podium before, and which we are talking about in college council. Leslie Quinn, the registrar, gave a good update on that yesterday. Admittedly, any explanation will be biased depending on the explainer's perspective. No set of numbers tells the whole story, though. Last Monday, a week before classes, almost 1,200 students were on wait lists, most of those in the general ed divisions. Since openings were plentiful in other sections, those students may have been waiting for a particular instructor or a better time slot or a different delivery method. So, if having more options is scary, offering more of them is complicated. My FA reps on the strategic enrollment team tell me students have been turned away in areas like computer sciences, industrial technology, and healthcare because of the lack of full-time and even part-time faculty to teach them. Jobs for adjunct instructors are posted, but then qualified or available applicants can't be found, leaving some of our new buildings and remodeled facilities to be used well below It's a tough sell, I know, but I'll posit it here anyway, that if the college truly wants to grow enrollment, you may have to grow the number of full-time faculty positions first, at least in those CTE programs where demand outpaces what we're presently able to offer. It was good to see Trustee Ingram on the Zoom call for the sabbatical presentations last Tuesday. I know Trustee Musil was there also, where we heard presentations on topics ranging from ceramics to the updated textbook for Business Math 120, to the digital educational material on the Nerman Museum's American Indian Art Collection. And last month, the Distinguished Service Award winners were announced. I won't read the names of all the recipients, but they come from a multitude of disciplines: English, Economics, Fine Arts and Photography, College Success, Communication Studies, Environmental Science, and Human Sciences. For the new trustees benefit, up to 10 faculty are recognized each year for distinguished service. Our master agreement authorizes the FA president to select an external judge who reads the applications and makes the selection. This year, I chose Dr. Greg Belcher, Director of the Kansas Center for Career and Technical Education at Pittsburgh State University. Dr. Belcher writes, "It was a true privilege to be selected to judge the faculty for the Distinguished Service Award. I was very impressed with this group. JCC has faculty that work well beyond their contract obligations. It was great to see this." Sentiments with which I agree. There is my report. I'd like to say to Mr. Musil, thank you for your leadership of this group the last several years.
Jim, thank you. I hope we're an example of people that can have spirited and robust discussion, all in the good interest of the college. I've appreciated it, and we spar over things that have nothing to do with trustee, Faculty Association relations when we spar, talk about our histories and who we think might be the best president, things like that. be the best president, things like that. So I've appreciated it and enjoy it. Questions for Dr. Leicher? Trustee Costin, and then trustee Cross.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for being here, Dr. Leicher, and I wanted to ask, would you repeat the departments where they turned away students?
That would be in the healthcare areas, industrial technology division, and computer science. And I would suggest you reach out to Dr. McLeod for verification on all of that. My information comes from my representatives on the strategic enrollment team. And there are probably others that I'm leaving out.
Thank you.
And Jim, with respect to the health services, healthcare, were those in some of our limited enrollment or restricted admissions?
That would be in our selected admissions programs.
I think we've unfortunately or fortunately always turned people down from a lot of those programs because of the limitations we have in the number of nurses, dental hygiene, those kind of places that are—we just have limited facilities, but it's frustrating when we hear that.
Sure.
Other questions?
Yes.
Trustee Cross. I was looking at Joy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. President Leicher, do you know where we're at in terms of the number of full-time faculty we have right now?
That's a number I should have in my head, but I know I'm going to get it wrong. We're in the neighborhood of about 320-something in terms of current full-time positions.
That's up from a record low we had just a few years ago.
I think the number is fairly stagnant the last few years. I remember a long time ago when it used to be around 360, 370. So there has been a—there was a decline especially about 10 years ago, but I think the number has more or less flattened out for the last few.
So if we have students on waiting lists, I mean, what impact does COVID have on that?
What impact does COVID have on the waitlist?
Yeah, I don't know. Like, I know at my kid's school, at church, at court—I mean, everywhere I go, we have delays and labor shortages, supply chain shortages at the grocery store. Like, there are a whole host of reasons related to COVID why things are happening. Is any of the waitlist issues due to COVID that you know of?
I think it's hard sometimes to make a guess as to why students are on waitlist, but one thing I'll put out there is that when you're looking at multiple sections of the same class, and some are full and have a waitlist, and then others are struggling to meet the minimum, you've probably got students who are shopping again for a particular teacher, or the online sections are full and they are waiting for another one. I suspect what's happening there is that you've got students who have a very particular need, and they're waiting for some opening in the schedule that's going to meet it. Now, without asking somebody, why are you on the waitlist? We can't really know that. And in the selected admissions programs that we talked about a second ago, those numbers aren't all that useful really for assessing what's going on there. Would you agree, Dr. Bound? So I don't know that it's related to COVID except indirectly, because I know that it's changing people's lives in such a way that maybe they can only take classes from home because of childcare issues, or maybe they have to only be here in the evenings. And so the constant challenge is for the department chairs who do the scheduling to try to figure out how many sections of what and which teachers and which delivery method is best suited to what we think the market is asking of us. So that's, I think, the dance that we're all trying to figure out.
I appreciate that. In your three decades here, though, you think that full-time hires could help us in that situation?
I will always be an advocate for more full-time faculty hires.
And then with respect to—we attended the sabbatical reception earlier today, and I forget who made comments about all of the issues that faculty go through to help meet and teach our students. I mean, what would be some examples of difficulties faculty have experienced? You referenced it in your opening monologue, frankly, but what would be some examples of difficulties?
Could you ask a question again, Mr. Trustee Cross?
Yeah, it probably wasn't a good question. As trustee Musil would tell you, I don't ask good questions. What are some examples of difficulties faculty have had during COVID, especially in meeting and teaching our students? Just to put language to that.
We have faculty who have tested positive numerous times, and they've had to make adjustments on the fly from teaching a face-to-face class, which is set up as face-to-face, to suddenly teaching those students in hybrid or Zoom formats. We've had faculty who have been dealing with their own childcare issues, their own healthcare issues.
So before they even get here?
Before they even get here. And then there are some disciplines that require sort of face-to-face teaching. You can't really teach welding, for example, in an online environment, or culinary—that requires touching, smelling, feeling. So we had some faculty who were teaching face-to-face all through the first year of the pandemic. I'm in an area of history where, you know, it's fairly easy for us to teach hybrid or online. It's not ideal, but we can do it. But again, trying to figure out what the right mix of delivery method is for the students and what we think they'll take and when they'll take it is always the big challenge. But I could probably provide you a long list of personal adjustments that
That'd be great.
that faculty have had to make.
That'd be great.
I can go back through previous reports.
One last thing, just a fun point, if I may, Mr. Chair. I recently went and dug up an old book on Fog Allen.
On what, sorry?
On Dr. Fog Allen, Forrest C. Allen, this little
Who?
osteopath and
Rosie.
faculty member, basketball coach at the University of Kansas. And I had read this book in high school, and I went and got it from my daughter to show him—as an osteopath at least—how much water he believed a person should drink to clear out one system. And I was reading that book, and the overall point I wanted to make to you was—I forget. I got off on telling the story. And now you're all looking at me. I don't know. I'll get back to you on that.
All right, trustee Hamel, and then trustee Smith-Everett.
Sure. I was curious how many adjunct professors we have, and is it—are they not allowed to be full-time at this point? Is that what the difference is? And do we have any openings, or how many openings we have as full-time and part-time right now?
As far as current openings that we're looking for
For full-time?
in terms of jobs posted—I don't know how many we're currently looking for in terms of adjunct postings. Our jobs site would have that. Somewhere, we've got numbers on the ratio of full-time to adjunct instructors, and it varies greatly by division. I think the last number I heard was something in the neighborhood of 60 to 40. Dr. Bound, am I on the right ballpark?
Probably, but I—yeah.
In some areas where the accrediting body doesn't allow for use or discourages use of adjunct faculty, the courses taught by full-timers is almost 100%. In other areas, communications, liberal arts, it's way different.
Yeah. So are they required to not be full-time at this point? Is that a requirement for adjunct professors?
Well, I guess I'm not understanding you exactly. So by definition, an adjunct instructor is a contract professor who's only taught for the class that they're commissioned to teach.
Yes.
Whereas full-time instructors who are part of the bargaining unit are under contractual obligation to teach 15 credit hours.
Okay, so forgive me. I'm learning a lot.
No, that's fine.
I think I heard somebody say that they were only allowed to teach up to nine hours as an adjunct.
So the rule is that adjunct instructors teach no more than nine credit hours, but there are exceptions to that. And so that rests with the dean and the CAO where they can authorize special circumstances where adjuncts can teach more than nine.
Do you see that being able to help at least alleviate some of the things you're talking about?
It could in some areas, sure.
And just CAO, Chief Academic Officer, Dr. McLeod, also Vice President—I mean, we use lots of acronyms here. So I remember as a newbie trying to figure out what all those meant, so.
I'm talking like somebody who's been here too long, and I just assume everybody knows what CAO is.
And I can answer the question on the ratio in terms of courses taught: 56% full-time to 44% part-time.
And that's number—that's based on sections?
I believe that's based on sections, yeah.
So almost half of our classes are taught by part-time instructors.
I can't remember where I was. I think it was trustee Smith-Everett.
I didn't have a question.
Trustee Smith-Everett.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Leicher, for your presentation. I just wanted to latch on to one of the comments you made, which I also heard last week, I think, on NPR, which is universities are experiencing a 50-year low in student enrollment. And I just wanted to echo that I think this is one of those cases where we have a great opportunity to prepare ourselves for what I think will be an eventual return of students who want community college over university after they've been out for a year or two, and looking at their life choices and their age and the time that they have. And I hope that that means that we, especially on this board, help prepare this institution for being as nimble as possible when that time comes where the students hopefully do return. I think it greatly depends on this little virus we keep spreading around the world and bringing back again like a—I don't know, like a—what's the thing in Australia? Boomerang. Boomerang. Yeah, it just keeps coming back. But I just wanted to echo the same sentiments I think we're all seeing, students having to make choices, and they're choosing not to choose higher education right now, which puts us in a difficult place.
And that's always been the big selling point of community colleges, right? Lower student debt, faster completion, and so forth.
Yeah, thank you.
Other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Trustee Cross. Just to finish the point, it was—I don't have to wonder what he sounded like, Fog Allen. You have one of the loudest booming voices I think I've ever heard.
Students have told me that.
And I appreciate that with the masks on, so I just—that Fog, as he baseball-impired, was called a foghorn in, like, Western Missouri. And so I just thought I'd comment that. I think a lot of him—and Bill Snyder.
But not foghorn, leghorn. Totally different concept.
I don't think I have anything to contribute at this point in terms of conversation.
Jim, a couple items. One of the things that we do around here, we recognize faculty for lots of stuff, the distinguished service award is more than just a title, because there's compensation that goes along with it.
Yes.
And I can't remember exactly what that is. Is it $5,000 a year for two years?
It's $5,000 that's spread out over two semesters—I'm sorry, two years. So half paid in year one, second half in year two.
I would—I think it's important—I would encourage maybe Dr. Bound to look for the new trustees and for all of us. I don't think the number of full-time faculty positions authorized by the budget has changed in six, seven, or eight years more than a couple. I think we've been in the 320-ish range for authorized positions. We don't always have all those filled. And I guess I'll make the point that in that—in the last five years, our enrollment has gone from 21,000 to 16,6. So we're always trying to balance as a board, how do we have the right flexibility in number of full-time versus number of adjunct? And it's literally a moving target based on the economy and our enrollment and everything else. So I appreciate what the FA does to try to match that, and what Mickey does to try to match that, and department heads, because it's not easy. And the last thing—this goes back, not to you, Dr. Leicher, but what Dick Carter mentioned, the tuition freeze for universities. I want to remind this board of our superb work, I think. We've raised tuition $1 in the last six or seven years, while the four-year universities have raised it 40, 50, 60% in that period of time. So when I first heard that the governor had done that, I thought, I wonder if that included community colleges? And then I realized it just included universities, because we've done our part in that, and now we've got to figure out other ways to attract students other than just the value that we've always kind of relied on. So no other questions? Jim, thank you, and I'm at 6:01 Mountain Time.
Oh, then I'm good.
All right. See you next month. Thank you. Kansas—Johnson County Education Research Triangle, trustee Cross.
Mr. Chair, thank you. The JCert did not meet this past month, but we did get a report on December 31st for the JCert transfer money we get with respect to the tax revenue that JCert collects. We were up to 2.2 million, up from 1.6 million in December of 2020.
Wow.
And in fact, the 2,287,879.25 was 700,000—more than $700,000 above anything that happened the last five years. So the total revenue received this year was 21,241,838.36, up 13.9% from last year. So that's a positive indicator. I will tell you that, again, we didn't meet. We will meet again come April 27th, or I suppose you will now, at 8:00 a.m. on April 27th at K-State Olathe. And that concludes my report. Mr. Chair, thank you.
Questions for trustee Cross? This is the 1.8 cent sales tax imposed by—the—or adopted by the voters in 2008. The 21 million is split three ways: the KU Cancer Center, KU Edwards Campus, and the K-State Olathe Campus. So that 21 million up significantly from prior years.
There's some inflation now, but so good.
Provides funding for those three higher education resources in Johnson County. We have a statutory representative to that board, but we don't receive any of the monies. So we obviously have programs with connections with all of those. So Kansas Association of Community College trustees, trustee Ingram.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll start off by saying welcome to Joy. Thank you. Glad to have you. It is a short report. It has been the holidays, and things are just kind of kicking back up, particularly with the legislature back in session. So I know our executive director, Heather Morgan, is spending most of her days in Topeka in meetings and in hearings. I also wanted to mention, particularly for the new folks here, that our college lobbyist here at Johnson County Community College really works in coordination with Heather. And oftentimes, you will hear from her or from me some of that same information, because they do work very, very close together, but she is certainly representing all 19 community colleges throughout the state. Heather and I had spoken late last year about the possibility of traveling to other community colleges. As it was mentioned, I've been the president for a couple of years, but through COVID, just have not been able to make those trips happen. So we're really hoping that we'll have the opportunity to meet with people this year. In lieu of that, Heather has offered to meet with individual college board presidents, board chairs, excuse me, and board president—or college presidents—I'm getting confused here—college presidents, board chairs, and the liaisons to talk about legislative priorities and just to make sure that we all have that same communication and understanding so that you can bring that forward, and just some of the talking points that we will really want to have. I do know we've had the legislative priorities for the trustees from KACC, and I'll make sure that we get those out to the three new folks. That's something that we'll make sure that you see in coordination with what we do here at the college. We continue to work closely as officers. There are five officers that are all over the state. We have one meeting Zoom per month, but our next quarterly meeting will be on April 1st. It is PTK, which is the Phi Kappa Theta Recognition of Student Honorees, and that will be in Junction City. So hopefully, everything will go as planned, and we will be in person for that.
What was the date? I'm sorry, what was the date?
April 1st. Mm-hmm. And I believe that concludes my report.
Thank you. Questions for trustee Ingram on Kansas Association of Community College trustees, which is funded by a levy against each community college student at each of the various community colleges?
Right.
So significant amount of the funding statewide comes from Johnson County Community Colleges, as the largest by a dramatic amount. So, okay. And that's quarterly, and the meetings—you probably got this in orientation, but the meetings are—you—since COVID, we've been able to join those by Zoom.
Right.
Even if they're having in-person meetings as well.
Except.
So it's a good opportunity to get to know what's going on at community colleges elsewhere. All right, the foundation report, trustee Cross.
Just thank you, Mr. Chair. The foundation board of directors have not met since we last met. They will meet next Wednesday, January 26th, for trustees Ratan and Laura Smith-Everett. I know that they are asking—or they're giving meeting attendance options, so that you should be on the lookout for that. I know that I've gotten an event regarding a free benefit concert honoring Korean War veterans that will happen on February 26th. And then Steve Krasky will do an event at the Polsky Theater regarding State of the Media Practical Personal Enrichment Series. I know that trustee Snyder went through a number of issues last month, so with that, Mr. Chair, I congratulate the new trustees on their position there. That's been one of my favorite positions. I'll tell you, I gave up a country club membership to do more with the foundation. That was one of the smartest investments in my career, and I—as we all, I think most of us anyway, are wearing these pins. The foundation means a lot to me, and I think to all of us, and so it's been my pleasure to serve there the last two years, and I thank this board for that opportunity. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Questions for trustee Cross on the foundation? If not, we'll move on to the committee reports and recommendations. Collegial steering, we did not meet in January, so we'll move on to the committee of the whole. We had this just simply listed as chairperson because of the gap we handled earlier. So I'll go ahead and prepare these. We have three actions that we need to take tonight, three recommendations. The first is on the Police Academy restroom renovation. It's on page three of the board packet. It is to, as I indicated, to do a renovation of a restroom It is to, as I indicated, to do a renovation of a restroom at the Police Academy. The low bid is to the Wilson Group for 301,335. It's a recommendation of the Board of Trustees to accept the recommendation of college administration to approve the low bid from the Wilson Group in the amount of 301,335 for the Police Academy restroom renovation on the main campus with an additional 10% contingency of 30,133.50 to allow for possible unforeseen costs for a total estimated expenditure of 331,468.50. And I guess I will make that as a motion.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Cross. Questions or comments? Questions or comments are certainly welcome from anybody. Trustee Hamel?
Yeah, I would like to say, you know, obviously we missed the committee of the whole this month, unfortunately, but I had a lot of questions. I wanted to make sure what we're doing. And I wanted to thank Mike Neal, Tom Hall, and Chief Russell for giving me a tour and showing what we were looking at. And again, I would have liked to have had more time, but unfortunately, we didn't get a chance to answer every single question I have, but I'm sure we'll fix that next time around, so.
Great.
Thank you to everybody.
Other questions or comments? If not, all in favor of the Wilson Group's low bid, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That motion carries unanimously. The next recommendation is for renovation of the CLB building restroom. Again, the low bid was the Wilson Group at 542,000, well, 492,751 in the bid, and it's a recommendation of the Board of Trustees to accept that recommendation of the college administration to approve the low bid from the Wilson Group in the amount of 492,751 for the CLB restroom renovations on the JCCC main campus with an additional 10% contingency of 49,275.10 to allow for possible unforeseen costs for a total estimated expenditure of 542,026.10, and I would move for that low bid.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Smith-Everett. Questions or comments on this one? Trustee Cross?
Trustee Hamel, didn't we tour that building?
Yes, we toured both of them.
I was with you at that tour.
Yes.
Thanks for inviting me.
Yeah.
They looked great. Thank you for the staff and Mr. Neal and Chief Russell was there and Tom Hall.
Question, other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The low bid for Wilson Company passes, 7-0. The last recommendation is for multimedia equipment, for the acquisition of new multimedia service equipment for yearly maintenance and improvements. It is a low bid per line item awarded to three bidders. Troxel at 71,809 for line items as indicated on page five of the board packet. B&amp;H Photo for 135,202.50, again, for specific line items in the bid package. And Ford Audio for 5,351.00, again, for additional line items. Those are all low bids for the items specified in the bid packet. So it's a recommendation of the Board of Trustees to accept the recommendation of college administration to approve the low bid, low bids from Troxel, B&amp;H Photo, and Ford Audio for the various multimedia equipment for a total estimated expenditure of 211,561.59, and I will make that motion for those low bids.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Ratan.
No.
Oh, trustee Ingram. Okay, I knew it came from over here. Trustee Ingram seconded the motion. Questions or comments on the low bids for those three items? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That motion carries unanimously. That moves us to the treasurer's report under President's recommendations. Trustee Cross is our outgoing treasurer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The treasurer's report can be found on page eight at sec of the board packet. The board packet includes the treasurer's report for the month ended November 30th, 2021. Some items of note include, on page one, is the General Post-Secondary Technical Education Fund summary. November was the fifth month of the college's 2021, 2022 fiscal year. The college's general fund unencumbered cash balance was 91.8 million. As of November 30th, 2021, expenditures in the primary operating funds are within the approved budgetary limits. And so it is therefore, Mr. Chair, the recommendation of the college administration that the Board of Trustees approve the treasurer's report for the month ended November 2021, subject to some audit, and I so move.
Second.
Moved by trustee Cross and seconded by trustee Smith-Everett to adopt the, or to approve the treasurer's report for the month ended November 30th, 2021, subject to our annual audit.
And, Mr. Chair, just brief discussion.
Sure.
Thank you to Rachel Learz for drafting that and making me look smarter than I am.
Okay. We all appreciate the staff doing that for us. All right, questions or comments on the treasurer's report? If not, all those in favor of approving this, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That motion carries unanimously, and it leads us to the monthly report from our president, Dr. Bound.
All right. Well, thank you all very much. Congratulations to those who elected to officer positions and to our three new trustees. Let me join the others in saying welcome. We're thrilled to have you here and look forward to working with you in the years to come. So, my report, you had, already had a chance to meet Rick Munoz. Again, we're pleased to bring you students each and every month. It's, it's easy in the board chambers to get focused on the tasks ahead of us, and it's always important for us to keep in mind that we're here for our students and to see the greatest opportunities for them. So we'll talk quickly about enrollment, the launch, which you've heard many different examples of the launch from the start of our spring semester, and then just a couple other quick items in my report this evening. All right, so you got to meet this good-looking guy with the really nice vest. All right, let's get down to business. From an enrollment standpoint, we are down 4.7%. The numbers are inching back upwards, but they're inching upwards with the start of this new semester. We'll still have opportunity to impact enrollment as the semester goes along with late starting classes as we move our way through the semester. If I look at the areas where enrollment is down, we saw this trend for the first time in the fall semester, so it makes sense to an extent. At least there's logic behind why the numbers are down, but our female students are down. Again, a little over 8%. This, to me, is, is a reflection of the realities that we're facing with COVID. And yet, I, I believe that, that we have to, to turn the negative into a, into a positive and correct the downward trend that we see, continue to see with enrollment as we move. And I'll particularly challenge our team as we move into planning, the enrollment planning process for our summer term and for fall and spring ahead. In addition, we're down in non-degree seeking, so in many cases, these are high school students, but not all high school students. We're also down in the number, and numbers and percentage of students transferring into the college, so they've been going to school somewhere else. So more students are staying where they are than leaving it mid-year to come back to us, or to come to us, as well as previously attended. Where we're up, we saw this last semester, and we're up in evening classes. We're up 12% in evening classes. And again, I think this, this speaks to, you know, particularly the, the working students who are coming to us in the evening and, and the need, as Dr. Leicher referenced in his comments, to look at the ways, whether it's additional faculty and other ways, to increase enrollment where the opportunities are there, and we certainly see those opportunities. I will say that Dr. McLeod and I have been in deep discussions, as I know he has worked with his, the deans that he leads, at looking at where the faculty positions are that we should be investing in for this coming year. And what Dr. Leicher referenced, you know, areas where we have waitlists, one of the challenges in those areas is that finding, recruiting faculty challenging on the adjunct side, it will not be easy on the full-time faculty, but it is an opportunity for us to very intentionally invest in ways that, that will result in growing enrollment. We're up in first-time students, almost 8%. And we're up in the percent of students taking developmental reading and writing courses. And then when we look at the demographics of our students, we're up in, in students that declare, identify with two or more races, our native Hawaiian students, and our Hispanic students are basically flat. And so while we see some declines in other student populations, among our Hispanic students, we're actually, we're flat, which is not bad, all things considered. And so I'll, I'll stop and say, are there questions about enrollment before I move on? This is the credit side. I'll hit non-credit here, continuing ed here in just a moment.
I recall it, in the fall, there's a, there's a, there's a date you actually make the count for K, Kansas Board of Regents purposes, like September 20th or something. Is there a date in the spring semester too?
Yes.
Okay, when is that? I mean, sorry, not fair.
The exact date is 20 days in, so.
February 14th.
What is it?
February 14th.
February 14th, there we go.
Valentine's Day. Thank you.
Yep.
So we've got a little while to inch up a little bit.
That would be John Clayton.
Yep.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes, oh, trustee Cross, sure.
The explanation I think we got from Vice President Weber in November about jobs simply not being available, I mean, that still holds, correct?
That's correct.
So, again, we're counter cyclical, just to probably beat that dead horse. Everybody at the table knows that, but that, that's probably the chief reason we're down.
That is a significant contributor to why we're down, is that folks are working.
And a comment from me, as, as an amateur economist, is that the Dow's down to 34,715.39 today, down eight, eight, nine percent. So I think as we see that market come down and people flood back into the job market when their portfolios go down, I think in the next year, I think we'll see an increase here in the next year or two. So I appreciate your candor on the numbers, as always. I really do appreciate that, because we need to know where we're at, and then we need to know, frankly, where we need to go. So thank you.
And I, I think to trustee Smith-Everett's comment about, there, there may be this window as, as folks begin to realize, hmm, I've got to go back to school, and how do I do it, and what are the short-term opportunities? You know, certainly, we want to prepare folks with stackable credentials to think about, and that's higher education speak for, you know, can we take a certificate and then build on it with an associate degree? And then for those that want to contribute, continue on for a bachelor's degree and beyond, how do you build those over time and build on those with efficient pathways? And so when you think about the opportunity for folks who may realize, yep, you know what, I do want to go back to school, what are the short-term opportunities? Particularly when we can, when we look at career and technical education areas and other areas that have a quick return on investment. I go to school, I go to school for a semester, I go to school for two semesters, I get the credential that goes with that, the industry certification that goes with that, and I can go to work and I can increase, you know, my earnings, my standard of living, if you will, and then can build on that with additional education. I think, I think there are going to be many of those opportunities. I, I continue to challenge our team to think about how do we do a better and better job all the time of retaining students, those students who start with us, to keep them with us, to keep them engaged with us, even if it's at a slower pace than they had originally planned, keep them engaged, because every semester that a student is out increases the likelihood that they're not going to come back, so.
Trustee Costin, then Matthew Law, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to ask a quick, quick question about retention. Could it, is retention at all affected by the fact that sometimes individuals might start down a career path, a program, but they get a number of courses under their belt and they are able to get more pay or, or get an advancement, and then they're like, I don't, I really don't need that program anymore?
Yes.
So are we, are we adjusting in the way we think about certificate programs and offering those rather than, or steering students towards those things, I guess?
So we, we realize that students come to us with all kinds of goals. There are students who come to us with a goal of earning an associate degree, we have students that come to us with a full intent of getting to their four-year institution as quickly as possible, so they'll start with us and they may not complete a credential. Yet we know students who complete a credential are more likely to complete the next credential. And so we're always looking at, how do you do that? So, and, and then when we factor in retention numbers, you're, you're factoring out those who are both in the numerator and the denominator, so both start to the equation, you know, those who are, who complete with us during that term. So we're factoring that into the equation, but we still have students who will start with us, they'll get, right in their mind, they've attained their goal. I needed those skills, I got those skills, and boom, I go to work. And so there's a variety of factors that go into that.
Trustee Smith-Everett.
Thank you. My question was, the enrollment that we're comparing to is last year's enrollment?
Last year's enrollment, that is correct.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, I'm going to keep rolling then.
I was about to say, thank you for your report, but I forgot, we've got some more topics.
There's actually, now I want to tell you where there's some really good news. And the really good news, from an enrollment standpoint and from, frankly, from a revenue standpoint, is with our continuing ed group. If you look at the chart here, we're comparing the, the past three springs, the dark blue is where we are year-to-date compared to point in time, and the yellow bar is where in spring of 20 and spring of 21 is where they, they ended the semester, or ended the spring period. And when we look at spring 22, you can see it's not a solid bar. That's because we're comparing against what the goal is, and the goal is 5,500. And so you can see, we are well ahead of 2020, and, and frankly, I believe we are ahead of, of 2019, which is completely pre-pandemic. So now, we, the, the number in spring of 19 goes up noticeably more than, than where we will be at the end of this spring season. We've set a goal at 70% of where we were in 2019, but the, the team, from a continuing ed standpoint, you know, really continues to outpace the goals that they've set for themselves, which I applaud our team for that, so. All right. If, if we look at then the spring semester, and, whoop, just launching this semester, you know, a few things that I wanted to highlight. Again, from a professional learning day standpoint, I just want to thank the team that has worked to, to launch that for this year with some significant changes in the faculty and staff development areas. You had a chance to spend some time with several of our faculty members that presented their sabbaticals during that week, last week, and, and I just want to shout out to, to our faculty, generally and specifically these five faculty members for their tremendous work during their sabbatical experience, and the way they use that learning experience for them to enhance the environment for our students and for our fellow faculty members and staff. Welcome Week is taking place and, and well underway. It's fun to see students back on campus. I can tell you that, that month or so where there aren't many students, while there aren't any students on campus until January hits, it is, it does this old guy's heart well to see so many students, and it, the hallways are full. And maybe the hallways are full because it was 18 degrees outside today in the fall, and, you know, we, it's warm and sunny and so forth. But bookstore volume is up 40% point in time compared to a year ago. That, that to me is a, a very good sign, that means that our students are taking advantage of the resources that we have here on campus. I, I commented in, in the previous meeting, and in several meetings, we've talked about the fact that we're bringing on, in partnership with Johnson County Mental Health, a licensed clinician. That person has been selected, and the person will start later in the month of February. So we're very pleased to be able to expand the services, knowing that mental health issues continue to be on the rise, and we want to do what we can to support our students and our faculty and staff. But in this case, the, the licensed clinician onsite is going to be a good next step for us. And then on a And then, on another good note and a fun note, our women's and men's basketball teams enter the new year ranked number one and number three in the nation, and it's fun to see them compete, and you're welcome to come to any of our games if you choose to come. They're good basketball, so. And then finally, my last slide, just a couple quick items, and I mentioned this in the all-staff meeting last week, you know, from a COVID standpoint, it is about how do we maintain and protect the learning environment? So, you know, for as far as I can see into the future, we're going to continue to follow our protocols because they're working. Are people getting sick? Yes, people are getting sick, but we're not seeing the spreads on campus. So we'll continue with the masking requirement. We've been able to offer several times, both late into the fall and into the start of the spring semester, in partnership with others, vaccination opportunities and to reinforce that. And then we have a partner for on-campus testing. I will tell you, they were busy all the time, unfortunately. Unfortunately, for those that are trying to get in and receive the testing services, but it's, I want to make it clear, we have a partner that's doing that. We're not managing that, it's not ours to run, but we have the space on campus to make it available. In addition, it's time of year for my mid-year review, and so I would ask that in the month of February with our board meeting, that we have an executive session for me to provide you with my self-evaluation. It's predominantly around the metrics and the performance of the college, but also relative to the goals that you have set together with me. And so I would bring that forward to you for your review and consideration in February. So, and that concludes my report.
Dr. Bound, with respect to that review, I don't know if you circulated as part of the orientation, but will you circulate to the entire board again your, what goals we agreed to, I guess, a year ago? Because some of us may have forgotten, and some of us have never seen them, so that would be helpful. And where will the licensed clinician be housed on campus?
Up in the student success area.
Okay, good, good. Trustee Smith Everett.
I had another question along that lines. What, is that a full-time capacity to serve students? Is that the expectation? Okay. And will, I'm assuming you have data on how many students she sees and how just serving her she or me?
I anticipate we'll be able to track the utilization. I expect that the person will be busy.
Okay. Just for the new trustees' sake, we had several months in a row where students, either student speakers or student senate representatives spoke to us about mental health needs, and that when we asked them what things we could get better at, or what things they need to be successful, it was a fairly constant recurring theme that mental health was a big thing. And just to Trustee Cross's comment earlier about reasons why students aren't out, just my own anecdotal friends with students or children that are college-age, that is, it's work, and then the mental oppression of living through a pandemic has really weighed on them, and it's just really difficult for them to think about doing a lot more than that, and I think that's, I'm really glad to know we at least have the first steps in being able to serve those needs, because even when they do come back at some point, we need to be able to.
That's right.
Trustee Cross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. President, thank you for that, and I concur with Trustee Smith Everett. When I was in San Diego, I attended a seminar by a presenter that talked about the incidence of domestic violence. I didn't know this, STI, sexually transmitted diseases, and other problems our students have been going through in the community college movement. So I think that's great. I also, I really do want to commend you and this board and administration for the policies we put in place last July. Those of us with school-aged children have struggled through what the schools are doing, and I know they're doing their best, but I think your leadership on that, encouraged to do that, and the support of this board to do that was critical, and I just wanted to put language to that, Mr. President. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments on the President's report? I would just note, for the record, that we're lucky that we have Trustee Ingram, who is a member of the Johnson County Mental Health Advisory Board, to be part of that effort, and do, again, applaud you, Dr. Bound, for bringing that licensed clinician on campus. There are no new, items of new business and no old business. The last item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a list of routine, generally administrative items, which is brought to the board and typically handled in one motion. Any member of the board has the opportunity to pull anything from that agenda and have it acted on and debated and moved separately. Is there anything in the consent agenda that any trustee would like to have considered separately tonight? Trustee Ingram.
I don't want it considered separately, nor would I pull it, but I did wonder about the academic calendar. I know several years ago, we went from 16 weeks to 15 weeks, and just wondered if we'd had any feedback on that. It's probably more difficult because of COVID, but just to anticipate, you know, will we have feedback on that, or how's it going? I guess it's just something simple, but just a little bit of follow-up with that.
Can we schedule that as maybe part of your next report next month, Dr. Bound?
I think we can do that.
And I think Jim will be ready, would be happy to speak to it as well. Dr. Leicher, I mean.
And I have no concerns, it's just, how's it going? How's it going? Because I know that things changed.
I'm not prepared to do it, but.
Why don't we do it at a prepared station, and both, you can address it in your comments next month, Dr. Leicher, and you can address it, and Mickey can be prepared. It wasn't, it wasn't a snap decision, and it won't be a snap answer, I guess, probably for, come on up, Jim.
Sure.
Dr. Leicher.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that I have any.
Jim found a microphone.
Yeah, imagine that. I think like some of the others, I'd like some time to kind of think about a good answer to your question, but as I recall, the main reason why we went to the 15-week schedule was to be in sync with other Kansas institutions. I think at the time when that happened under Dr. Sobchak, we were one of two schools in the state community college that were still doing the 16-week semester. And we noticed that there were some problems, especially if we're trying to, I shouldn't say this on camera, but still, away from KU or some of the others, that if our schedules and theirs are a little bit out of sync, it creates some problems for students who are taking classes at two institutions at the same time.
I appreciate that reminder, and I apologize, I didn't mean to get us off course at all.
I mean, from my point of view, I think it's, I think it's going well, but you'll find folks who disagree with me.
Well, I'm not, I'm just, it was a quick question. Thank you very much.
And I think one of the things that I would, I'll sit down with Trustee Cross about ways I could have done better, but one of the things is, on the consent agenda, I think we ought to have, you can discuss items on there without pulling them, and then vote on all of them, rather than have to pull it to discuss it, so this is a, this is a good primer for that. Trustee Smith Everett.
Thank you. Trustee Ingram, thank you so much for your comment, because the one note I had in my board packet I overlooked, which was about that academic calendar. And just for a refresher on, gosh, I think it was two years ago now, Juneteenth was voted by this board to be an official holiday. I do not remember, I remember after that vote, we then, it went to a task force, I want to say, but I didn't see it on here as a holiday, while other holidays are mentioned that the school is closed, or there are no classes for, so forth, and I wondered about the status of Juneteenth as a recognized holiday.
It's a holiday now. I don't, I don't think we voted it in as a holiday, but realizing that from a federal standpoint, it is recognized federally as a holiday, but a group has been working on that analysis.
Okay. So it's not recognized as a holiday for staff or?
It has not to date been recognized as a, yeah, that's correct.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments on the consent agenda? Oh, Trustee Cross, yeah, I just wanted to comment on, I think it's B3, the unpaid extraordinary leave of absence. I think that's for Senator Baumgartner, and I think she had, I think you told me earlier, she had negotiated that with Dr. Sobchak, is that right? I think there has been a, there has been a leave of absence so that she could serve in the state senate while being a member of the administration here for a number of years. I don't know the details of it, but it is, I think it is a balancing act between allowing employees the opportunity to serve in public office, and recognizing that if they are not serving full-time, then they should have a reduction in their compensation during that period of time.
I know, and I just wanted to recognize her and her service over there. I've had several drives in my life to Topeka, as I know many of us have, but we thank her for her service, because she's been an ally of the community college movement, and I just wanted to recognize her and her service. So, thank you to Senator Baumgartner and the administration for helping her do that.
There's nothing else? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as published?
No move.
Moved by Trustee Smith Everett, seconded by Trustee Ingram. Is further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That motion carries 7-0. The last item is adjournment, but before we adjourn, I'm going to make my last statement as a chair, that if, many of you heard it here tonight, nobody knows how many Cs come after the J. JCC, JCCC, JCCC. I've always preferred to refer to it as the college, or our college. It does not work with these old trustees, but your new trustees have a chance to turn over a new leaf, so that we don't have to worry about how many Cs we're saying, but that's a personal